This podcast is also available via stage link.com, the groundbreaking new platform for live performing arts. Please support the podcast by liking, subscribing, commenting and tagging the podcast. It helps us to continue to bring the industry high level content. I'm your host, Sine Stiletto, and my guest on today's Circuspreneur podcast is Chair Alexis Hill, Washoe County Commissioner for District One and candidate for Governor of Nevada. Welcome to the podcast, Alexis.
Thank you for having me. I'm thrilled to chat with you today.
Thank you so much for taking the time in your very, very, very busy schedule. You are balancing numerous roles at this point in time, and I can only imagine Alexis. And I wanted to let listeners know a little bit about you. Elected in 2020, Alexis Hill brings more than a decade of experience in public policy, city planning and community development. A Sparks native and former nonprofit leader with organizations like the Lake Tahoe Shakespeare Festival, Chair Hill is known for her focus on conservation, smart growth and building healthy, connected communities across Nevada. She is also a current candidate in the upcoming Nevada governor's race, continuing her commitment to public service and community driven leadership. Fantastic Alexis. And you know, I love your really rich history Alexis, just to start out in the nonprofit space and your connections to the arts, you know, I was dialing into, you know, a bit of your history within that and your connection and work with the NEA and Art Town and, you know, and dialogue around like Burning Man. And you know what kind of like arts hub that's been, which you know, all of those prolifically now support circus, you know, arts and support circus arts industry workers. And so that's such like a breath of fresh air too with you, I think, coming into the governor's race, but then also to like your perspective as commissioner in terms of how the arts works, our connections to the arts, um, you know, with respect to, you know, there was the Nevada Shakespeare Festival that just happened this past year. So I was thinking about that when I was doing your bio. And they also just got a really great grant from the Nevada Arts Council, you know, just this past week, which again will just infuse more growth and more, you know, possibility into the local arts community and industry. And so could you speak a little bit about, you know, your past and your connections to the arts Alexis?
Absolutely. Well, I actually got into the arts as a child. I play piano, I sing, and I have always been interested in, you know, going to the theater, going to museums and just a total appreciator of all, all of the arts. And I never really thought I could do it for a living because you know, you're, it's pounded into you, you know, that you've got to do something more practical. And I was never even half as talented as you and all of your audience are. So I, I got a political science degree from Texas A&amp;M, came back to my hometown Sparks and worked as a planner. And there was a great recession coming and the work was drying up and they were laying off, you know, municipal employees, especially municipal employees who had just been hired. And I was one of the earlier hires. And so I needed to find a new career. I left actually before the layoffs started happening. I was really lucky to be hired by the Lake Tahoe Shakespeare Festival. And that just being in the arts industry and being connected to artists every day was so amazing. And really made me feel like the arts can create community. So yes, the arts are an amazing thing to experience, you know, yourself and to, you know, they, they help individuals grow and help us think in a better way and a more, in a, a different way. But also the arts create community and that, that was just a hit home for me. So while I was running the Shakespeare Festival, another opportunity to run a nonprofit in Minden came up for special needs kids called Kids and Horses. But the city of Reno, in the meantime, was looking for a arts culture and events manager. And I thought, wow, I can put my city planning into place and also show how the arts can create community in Reno. And that was during the time when we were still climbing out of the Great Recession, 2012, I was hired and really used federal funds to support the city and buying public art to be placed throughout the community, which created a lot of community pride and excitement because these pieces of artwork were homegrown. They had come from artists from Burning Man or artists locally. And they also supported our new spaces. So we had just redeveloped the road for our midtown community and it really created excitement and community cohesion, plus supporting performing arts throughout the community and our visual arts program as well. It just was so important to bringing people together and having people feel pride about being from Reno and getting excited about that Reno Renaissance. And so the work that you do is essential. It's essential to the economy. We did a study. We found out that the arts were the second largest employer in our county. The first largest employer was the school district, but artists are entrepreneurs. So yes, you don't, you're not under one umbrella, but you represent a huge amount of people. And I'm assuming in Las Vegas that you've got to be at the top as well for a major employer.
Yes, absolutely. That's so wonderful. You have such an incredible background. And also too, an understanding and respecting our industry. And I love how you call it that Alexis, because most oftentimes we're not even thought of as an industry, you know, as being a part of the arts, the performing arts and circus arts. And that's been our work, you know, on this podcast and bringing in, you know, local officials, you know, to discuss how our industry works, you know, like what makes it tick. And also too, how important we are to the creative economy, to the local economy in Reno, Northern Nevada, also too now in Southern Nevada. And like how that footprint works, how we can expand it, how we can support it. And it's the work of folks like you, you know, in your past and even now, you know, as county commissioner in, you know, making sure that the arts is represented well and that we have access to adequate funding and all of those things. So could you go, you know, into some detail too about as commissioner, about how you have, you know, harnessed that position as well to support the arts and the local arts community?
Absolutely. Well, COVID had many horrible things that came out of it, certainly. And we're all still recovering, but there were some positive things that came out of it. We received as counties and cities, a lot of federal funds that we, we got to discuss as a community, how we wanted to spend those federal funds to invest in our small businesses, to invest in our nonprofits, to invest in social services that really needed that support. And so in addition to transforming what we've done for homelessness in the region and that program, which I'll get into later, we also invested in our nonprofit partners and the arts. So we invested in local artists doing murals in our different parks to create again, that community pride and cohesion. And also we're trying to find sculpture placements. We have an art trail that is an app that when you go to Burning Man, you can check out all the art from the moment that you arrive at the airport to driving to the Black Rock Desert. And we want everyone to see the incredible art in our community. And so that was another thing that we invested in to ensure that people can, from the outside, can see what a gem Reno's art scene is. And so I have been really excited to do those investments. Sadly, with federal funds drying up and, and our local communities being, having financial straits. And I can get into that in more detail, why that's happening. We, I think those investments are going to start to slow down, especially with the NEA and the dismantling of the NEA by the Trump administration. It's heartbreaking because these governmental grants are part of, you know, what keeps this industry alive and really shows the community how important the arts are as well.
Well, I'm glad that you brought up the NEA Alexis, and that speaks to, you know, one of our bill ask, and that's the Circus Arts Category Recognition Act. And that is something that we've been pushing for, for the past few years. And you know, that would give circus arts its own category. And it would, you know, essentially protect the circus arts within the NEA so that we have more rights, we have more access to grants and funding. And again, that predates what's happening currently. But we want to make sure that we continue to push for that bill because that will ensure protection. You know, hopefully, you know, the NEA will continue to, you know, will retain its funding. It seems like it will go in that direction. I'm grateful for all of the advocacy that's been around, you know, protecting the grant processes and then also to trying to protect the retroactive grants that maybe have been canceled. But again, that's why we were pushing for this bill. We were pushing for it earlier because unfortunately the circus arts continues to be seen as more of like a multidisciplinary art form and category. And we know in Nevada, the strength of the circus arts is so prolific, you know, it doesn't even seem like it should be a question. And I feel like there's such state pride for circus. And so we want to extend that to the, you know, the federal level. And then also to have those increased protections for funding, you know, within the Nevada Arts Council. And that's why we've spoken a lot with the Nevada Arts Council and they've expanded, you know, funding from the, from their folk arts grants into the circus arts as well. So that that can, you know, add more opportunity and possibility for folks on the state level to access funds that are still there. And, uh, you know, again, so, you know, can you provide a little bit of perspective, you know, about the importance Alexis in policy, you know, around the arts? I think sometimes the arts gets a little bit lost in policy of, you know, folks in entertainment think like, you know, what has policy got to do with us? But as someone who has worn multiple hats like you have yourself, and you've seen how important those investments are, and then also too, with how things can shift so rapidly, you know, in government and affects certain things, can you discuss your perspective on how important it is to have policy to protect things, you know, within the arts and around the arts?
Absolutely. Well, I think the grant program through the Nevada Arts Council is essential to so many of these arts nonprofits, as well as really supporting individual artists and making sure that they're lifted up and given a platform as well and, you know, given that legitimacy. And so as governor, that is something that I want to continue to do and invest in because it is an important industry. I'll tell you too, the, the artists that I work with, um, they're not always affiliated with a nonprofit. They are part of that gig economy. And I think we need to do more to protect artists and, and I mean lift drivers and all the, you know, many different entrepreneurs who are part of that gig economy and make sure that they are supported, especially in these economic downturns. We need to have a really strong social safety net in the state of Nevada to support folks on unemployment, on, you know, training, on ensuring that, you know, folks get rental assistance as needed, you know, keeping people housed, giving them the support that they need. These are all major priorities that I think affect artists and, and as well as, um, you know, everyday Nevadans. But, you know, they, you know, I think that they deserve someone who understands that industry on the ground and how important it is to make sure that they're supported because we know that these gig workers had the hardest time getting their unemployment during COVID. We don't want that to happen again. I think that there's a lot of ways to support dealers so artists can be lifted up and, and can stay in this type of work, you know, between jobs. Because I know that talking to you, that's, that is pretty much how it works, right?
Yes. And thank you so much, you know, Alexis, for giving voice to the circus workers plight here in Nevada and speaking about our issues, you know, in a political way, in a policy way. Again, we're not necessarily always included in those conversations. And that brings us to, you know, our Circus Workers Act. And you were articulating so beautifully the different provisions that we would like supported within the Circus Workers Act where we would have that safety net. You know, as you were saying, that protects us during, you know, mass layoffs of shows. When shows, you know, close down in succession faster than new shows can open up and they can't sustain us and then we have to leave Nevada. And, uh, you know, those are Nevada dollars. If we leave and we go and pursue work other ways and we go on tour or we have to go internationally, which is very normal within circus, you know, Nevada loses us, you know, um, you know, from the economy. And, uh, you know, that's something that we want to avoid with gaining more protections than sustainable unemployment and other provisions within this bill that could, you know, again, harness us during those very difficult and challenging times so that we can wait for the next opportunity. And it's not just waiting around, which some folks might think, you know, because the arts and entertainment, sometimes we're seen as, oh, you're just kind of waiting around for a job. You know, we have to work within that time. We're never not working to get that next job. And we also, you know, think that there could be some protections around how many shows, you know, kind of fold at once. And, you know, again, preventing certain things that are kind of just the norm. They become the norm, I think, in the local, you know, Nevadaan economy with respect to the arts, where people say that's just the way that it is, but looking towards things in a different way. And you've spoken a lot about looking about, looking at things in a different way in your run for governor Alexis. And so could you expand on what that different way would look like through your eyes as commissioner currently, as someone who's already an elected official, and then expanding on that approach with you would be expanding your reach, obviously, as governor, you know, of Nevada? And what that would look like, including in my eyes, some of the most prolific, you know, representations of Nevada, which is their performers and entertainers, while also too, speaking towards working families, which that also includes us as well. You know, a marker that we're not usually considered as, but we are working families. What would that mean for you in terms of, you know, becoming governor?
Absolutely. Well, I think that we really need to expect more as Nevadans from our government. We have adjusted to just being a little bit worse every year. And we, that is unacceptable. We should ask for more from our leaders. And that is why I'm running, trying to lift up my county, the second largest county in the state, but having fewer and fewer resources to support these vulnerable people. The last time Nevada's revenues, so our, our taxes kept up with inflation was 1990. And so I was a child during that time. I actually did grow up in Nevada. But it, it's heartbreaking because we have tripled the population and yet our revenues are staying the same. So no wonder we can't support people when they're having a hard time. And for counties, we are the first line of defense. We get folks who are homeless. We, you know, we want to support them. We, we have folks who are falling into our indigent care at the hospital or may even be jailed and going through our court system because of some bad decisions that were made because of being poor essentially. And I think that we can do a better job in investing in Nevadans and uplifting Nevadans. And the reason that I've chosen to run is that I am not seeing anyone talking about investing in Nevadans and how we can make sure that we lift up the people who live here and give them the, the tools to be successful, the opportunities to be successful. This is not handouts. These are opportunities to lift up our communities. And speaking to so many small businesses, they need more opportunities and they, they need that support as well. And so that is what my plan is all about. I want to get back down to basics in Nevada of fixing our streets. We know that how unsafe all of our streets are and highways in the state of Nevada, as well as, um, you know, investing in public transportation, supporting folks who are on our streets, our homeless population and really being a leader and convener on those issues in Southern Nevada and really the pushing the, the great work that we've done from Washoe County and seeing how we can support the rest of the state and ensure that we get folks off the street and the help that they need. And I, I want to fund our schools. Um, we are not even in the median of per capita, per child funding in the United States. And we know we need to do better. And so we need to invest in our kids because we, we know how important it is that they graduate and they find their next careers. And right now we're just, uh, we don't have enough money to do a great job. And Nevada continues to rank, you know, very low and in our schools. And we, it's amazing teachers. It's not the teacher's issue. It's that the schools just don't have enough funding. And then I, I want to support our families and I want to do that in a myriad of ways. But essentially it's, it's quality of life issues, making sure people have access to outdoor, outdoor opportunities and cultural opportunities like our libraries and theaters, et cetera. And then also making sure that families have support when they are having a hard time. And in Nevada, if you have a disabled child, it is really tough to find services, for example. We want to support families who are suffering through that. So there, I want to shift the way that we look at how it is to be a Nevadaan and also how we should expect that our government supports us. Because we have decided that it's okay to have worse and worse results. And I want to turn that around. Nevadans deserve better.
Well, I love what you were saying about education Alexis and supporting children. And, um, you know, we all talk about wanting more kids to have access to, you know, circus outreach. And, um, you know, getting kids away from their phones and helping them to also be on the pathway to have a career. Most oftentimes when I even speak to local kids, they don't even realize that they could end up in a Cirque du Soleil show or on the Vegas Strip or in Reno, working and doing circus there as well. And I think it, you know, would be a wonderful way to increase the overall health and mental health of children. That's also a part of, you know, one of the bills that we're pushing as well is to, you know, have accreditation of circus arts in school programs and increased funding so that they can use that as a pathway to a degree, to a, a professional job. You currently cannot get a degree as a circus artist and we would love to change that so that the children, you know, that have circus in their backyards, you know, have access to that as, you know, an adequate future and then can go on to be, you know, responsible and, uh, you know, citizens that contribute the way that all of us have. My life has, you know, benefited so incredibly by this local economy. And, you know, the way that Nevada has been able to support the arts and support the circus arts. You know, you come here to buy a home and to start a family. When you are a circus artist, it's always been that way in Vegas so that you can, you know, lay some roots here and have a plan. And so we want to see a future for, you know, circus industry workers and performers and entertainers where you have a possibility of a retirement. You have benefits, you have some type of pension, you have paid leave, you know, you can take a vacation with your family, even though we have very robust schedules. But, you know, maybe even also too, having some fluidity for performers too and how, and having some say in how our schedules are driven. So those are really important things that are, you know, big topics in our industry in terms of having representation and also to having representatives that will vocalize their support on that. And also to innovative and effective ways to support this workforce that just continues to increase. Yesterday I was at the Nevada Jobs Now event that was discussing the special session for the Summerland Studios Tax Incentive Bill, which is interesting, you know, as someone who has been doing stunts and is a part of SAG for so many years, working and based in LA. And also to someone who's now working here full time and I've been based in Vegas on and off for so many years. It's a really interesting adaptive thing that they are proposing. And my biggest goal as the, you know, as the advocate is how were, how would there be adequate representation for local circus artists on the ground with a bill, if that bill passes and to what degree? You know, how will folks be affected if something like that happens? And then how can we speak to, you know, what our asks are before a bill like that completely formulates and takes shape, especially during a special session, which I'm assuming some kind of provisions will be changed and made, you know, in potentially cutting some type of deal. But there is a lot of diversifying of the economy currently Alexis. And, you know, we've discussed this a lot within our industry too, of there's so many things coming and competing with one another. You have so many of the stadiums coming, you have Formula One and how that affects local circus industry workers and entertainers, you know? When those things come in, how many shows do we lose when other opportunities, um, you know, kind of take a foothold? Not saying that it's necessarily good or bad, but what are the effects on those things in positive ways? What are the ways that we experience those things in real time? Do they build jobs for us in a certain capacity? Yes, but then sometimes at the same time, other jobs are lost. So, you know, it's a really interesting dynamic conversation that we're having in the industry, in the impacts that we're seeing with so many different diverse, you know, environments coming into Nevada. And so what is your perspective on that moving forward Alexis? And, you know, also too, again, in your current role and then also too, during this race for governor?
Well, when I grew up in Sparks, you could work at the casino, both, both parents and buy a house. And that is just not possible now. And that's fully unacceptable to me. I, I think you're right. Nevada is a great home base for a circus performer, for performing arts person because they can have low cost of living here and then go on travel and come back, you know, to Nevada and, you know, keep, keep Nevada as their home. And I think that we need to make sure that we are advocating for working families to be able to buy a single family house. And right now, we have allowed for major corporations to come in and gobble up all of our housing and we're not properly taxing them for that. And that is something that I am proposing to change as well, because I think if we're, you know, going to, uh, if, if there's property rights are king and people can do that, then we need to just make sure we can put those revenues in a affordable housing trust fund and really invest in housing for workers to make sure that workers can stay here and thrive here. On these major tax deals, I've got to tell you honestly, I'm, I'm very concerned. They are in the immediate really exciting because you've got Hollywood coming and the stars coming. And you are creating jobs to build these studios. So I'm not arguing that jobs are not going to be created as part of this, but in the long term, we, there, there is no state that has, you know, adopted these transferable tax credits that they have seen real economic gains. Um, most states have stripped these back. Um, they haven't seen the outcomes that they want to see. And it's, you know, they're talking potentially close to a billion dollars of your tax revenues that are going to major corporations, billionaire corporations who don't necessarily need, you know, Nevada tax money to support their industry. And so I, I want Nevadans to kind of take a different view on these things. Why are we taking the scraps when we could be investing in homegrown Nevada industries and supporting the film industry that we could create in Nevada and attract in Nevada? If that is the diversification that we need. And so that, that is my major thing. I think supporting these, the oligarchy essentially is actually threatening our democracy. And as a state, we really need to think about that. We can support Nevadans, but we don't have to give our money away. And so I do have a concern with the program that I'm, I'm seeing with the special session, especially as we're seeing people's healthcare being stripped away or it's going to be incredibly expensive as well. SNAP benefits to kids and moms, um, you know, are also at threat. Um, and so I think that those are the priorities that the legislature should be looking at, not how, how can we lure the film industry here and take away from, you know, potentially, you know, services for Nevadans, our schools, public employees, et cetera. We, we got to do better.
Well, thank you so much Alexis for articulating these, you know, wonderful and interesting initiatives. You are, you know, a fantastic, you know, candidate, uh, you know, fantastic person. I've, you know, been, you know, very fortunate to get to meet you and to speak with you. And also too, again, to hear your support of the local entertainment community, of the local performing arts community, especially during such times when folks are really looking for hope. They're looking for a way forward and they're also looking, I think, for innovative ways to move us forward as Nevadans, as local entertainers and folks that sometimes feel like they're left behind, especially when things get really rough. You know, you spoke so eloquently about, you know, the difficulties in 2012, you know, if anyone that knows that made it through that in entertainment, it was rough. And then we made it through, you know, COVID and the pandemic, also rough. So, you know, again, during another time where it could be a very big challenge, it's like, what are some innovative solutions for us so that we're able to, you know, be sustainable in the long term, no matter what, no matter what comes our way as an arts community, as an arts industry, which is so important for us to be recognized as. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come onto the Circuspreneur podcast. Thank you so much Alexis.
Thank you for all you do. You're highlighting a very important industry and you need leaders who support you and see you, and I do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time and, you know, good luck, you know, on your campaign trail. You are insanely busy and I look forward, you know, to, you know, to partnering with you in the future on different circus initiatives, um, you know, as commissioner. And then also too, again, thank you for highlighting circus industry workers and entertainers throughout your run for governor. And so, thank you Alexis.
Thank you.
And I want to end this episode with this Circuspreneur podcast is also available on stage link.com, S T A G E L Y N C dot C O M, stage link.com, the groundbreaking new platform for live performing arts that provides unmatched access and connection to this vibrant world of shows and entertainment. If you're a professional in the performing arts, visit stage link.com/pro, stage link pro, S T A G E L Y N C P R O. Offers industry professionals higher visibility, networking opportunities and tools to support and enhance their careers. Until next time, everyone, I'm your host, Sine Stiletto. Thank you so much for tuning into this episode of the Circuspreneur Podcast. Thank you so much for tuning into this episode of the Circus Preneur Podcast with Alexis Hill.